Boy, I've had this pedal on time. Okay.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of September 5th, 2024. Kim, would you take roll call, please?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Hatton?
Here.
May I have this show?
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, you're good.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. First item of business is that we adopt the agenda. Make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I believe, is the consent agenda. There are two things, A and B, and one is approve monthly claims and then approve the March 7th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Is there a?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're at item number three, public comments. A few couple of people in the audience that don't look familiar to me as far as being on the city council or mayor. Could you just tell us your name and put your name and address down there, please?
Yeah, my name's Kane and Martin. I actually live over in Lakeland. I'm the general manager for the Green Canopy, and I just wanted to take an opportunity at this meeting to thank kind of the neighborhood and everyone for being pretty friendly and welcoming and allowing us to open our doors. And I wanted to invite people down to come see. We've really made some big changes on the inside of the building. Next month, we'll be making additional changes aesthetically to the exterior. So I think it'd be nice if anyone, mayor, council, any staff were interested in coming down and checking out, having a little VIP tour outside of kind of the normal business hours. I wanted to open that up to y'all. I'll drop off some cards with everyone and maybe get the ball rolling by emailing Kim an initial kind of reach out. But mainly, I just wanted to thank everyone in the area for kind of general acceptance of us and just a nice warm welcome. It's been really a pleasure so far serving the community, and I want to make sure people understand the variety of things we offer in terms of services as well as products. So if anyone has an opportunity to come down, check us out, I think that'd be great. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dennis Lund, 1-655-5 for Street South in Lakeland Shores. Mr. Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for running the city the way you have. It's, uh, we as the whole community have done a great job, so I really appreciate that. I have two general comments to talk about. One is with respect to specifically the cannabis ordinance that we've got in place that expires on January 1st. We, as a community, have to make a decision as to whether we're going to try to do any local regulations as allowed under state law for the, for that type of business and, or if we're going to just default to whatever the state or the county has for rules in that area. So I'm curious as to what we've got for plans, what I can do to assist with those plans, to come up with the local ordinance that fits the community's needs. That's item number one. Item number two is we have a small police budget, and I don't know if we have a noise ordinance and with the county road split jurisdiction between probably the county and Lakeland and Lakeland Shores, I'm not sure if there is any enforcement mechanism at all for noise complaints. And if they're, this is mainly transportation noise on the county road. Businesses around have been very respectful. I appreciate that. But when there's, you know, hundreds of motorcycles going by in the course of a morning it, or an afternoon or an evening, it can be pretty disruptive to the enjoyment of the properties in the area. So I don't know what we've got for options in that area, but I certainly don't want to see us spend a whole boatload of money for no real return and getting the noise-making public, if that's a term, unhappy with us as a city. So I'm not sure what we've got for options in that area.
Well, as to number two, the noise, I mean, the noise on the river is not quite as bad, but, you know, they have those, whatever they are, cigarette or cigar boats or whatever that go up and down the river that truly is, you know, it's very minimal compared to motorcycle noise as far as the number, but it's still rather aggravating, as far as I'm concerned. There doesn't seem to be any attempt by, as far as I can tell, living on the river, that any attempt by any police, which I assume is the sheriff, you know, to do anything about those particular boats. You see the sheriff out there, not necessarily when the boats are going by, but, you know, you do see them. And so I'm sympathetic to your noise complaint as well as, you know, the motorcycles, which of course, at this time of year, everybody feels like they have to be out riding their motorcycle, I guess. You know, we could, you know, call up the sheriff, I suppose, no?
Mayor, council members, it's a public roadway, and most city ordinances, first off, the county has jurisdiction, and it has to be ongoing noise. It has to be for a certain amount of time.
Continuous, yeah. So they got us on the flood run, but otherwise it's.
Are you, basically what you're saying is, is that, I mean, I've never really understood it, but, you know, we all have mufflers in our cars, and yet motorcycles seem to get great joy out of, you know, gunning the engine, whether it's coming under the 94 bridge or wherever they are starting off from, if it's a bar, that type of situation. So I don't understand why. I understand what you're saying about a continuous noise factor.
It's, it's specific, like five, 10, even, it's up to 15 minutes, continuous noise. So somebody driving through on a bike, it's not going to apply. And I will also tell you that the Washington County Sheriff's Department does not have decibel meters, so.
So what you're saying is a phone call to the Washington County Sheriff would be nonproductive?
I, I believe so, but feel free.
Any other discussion on that point? Now, we have the ordinance, cannabis ordinance, which right at the moment, there's a moratorium that lapses at the end of December of this year. I actually thought we were, before I saw the agenda, that we might be discussing that tonight, but Kim, do you have any ideas to?
It's been worked on by the consulting planner. We're still waiting because the state hasn't put all their rules and regulations in.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, the eggs aren't all in the basket yet, basically.
Yeah, it, it'll be November, December, it could even be the January meeting, so. But there will be a public hearing scheduled, and you will be adopting an ordinance.
Okay, and where are we going to get that ordinance from?
From the consulting planner. The league has just started putting models of ordinances on their website. But yeah, we've been in touch and we're going to be working on that.
Thank you. Will that, then the public comment and input into that ordinance would be at whatever meeting we end up holding to update that ordinance or to establish the ordinance?
Public hearing is required.
And if we decide to not have an ordinance, is that an option?
You know, I was reading over something earlier on, which I got in the mail, and this is basically the, this here, which is the cannabis legislative updates and considerations, and I can't remember when I got it. This is spring 2024. Okay, they do talk about a website. If you want the Cannabis Planning and Zoning Handbook from Minnesota Counties, and this is basically directed at the counties, download the handbook at www.mencounties.org under Resources and Jobs. And I have no idea what you'll find there because I didn't read this particular, I cut it out when I, or saved it when it came in the mail, but I haven't done anything about exploring that particular website.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council members, I just, the city will be adopting their own ordinance. And, and the ordinance will take place in, because you have a moratorium right now. So that ordinance will be related to use.
To what?
To use.
Run that by me again.
Retail establishments.
Okay.
It will be related to that. The city has to put something in place.
I mean, in other words, we can't depend upon the county doing it for us?
No, no, no. You need to put your own ordinance in place, and you will.
And so if nothing else, I mean, we have to have a meeting in December anyhow, or November, one or the other, to approve the final levying budget, but the, so conceivably we would be doing that at that time?
Yep.
I mean, we won't be calling a special meeting, we'll be doing it during?
Oh, yeah, you'll be doing it during your regular meeting.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And it will be before the end of the year.
Yep. And if we didn't, and there was a moratorium lapses, that means that if, let's say we did the ordinance in February of 2025, that means that people that are looking for licenses to sell cannabis would conceivably be able to do so during that period in which we have no ordinance?
Well, Mayor and council members, that's really tricky because there is no location to do this except for one. So, um, let's just, yeah, let's get into the detail later, but the city will be putting their own ordinance in place.
Yep.
And I am going to try and have the, the city attorney here for that meeting because the city cannot, and again, I don't want to get into all this detail now because we don't have the draft ordinance, but the city cannot put an ordinance in place that eliminates.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I mean, you can't say that two miles from the school, for instance.
Correct.
One, Mr. Mayor, one comment, that the state law does allow a thousand foot from limitation from a school and 500 from a daycare facility, but of course, the final rule's on there, but that's what the law reads, whether the rules will read the same or not. And St. Paul is discussing, other communities are discussing that, so it's, it's a topic that's out there.
Yep.
The ordinance cannot prohibit one use.
Right.
Within the city.
Okay, is there any other discussion on two concerns or questions by Mr. Lund? Apparently there isn't.
Thanks, Harris.
So hopefully that answers some of your question, okay, other than the fact that we're totally, I am totally unprepared to even discuss it until we actually have some sort of ordinance in front of us, okay, whether it be adopted from some other city or whether it be the one that they send to us from some establishment. I can only assume that you're looking for a license, sir.
Well, I want to do what's best for the community, and we want to make sure that we understand what else is going to take place with that. So we're, we're, more than anything, we're staying on top of understanding the law, staying on top of understanding the notices, staying on top of what other cities, counties are doing, and just preparing the best we can for the future of it, so.
And right at the moment, other than that 12,500, you know, population basis for per retail site, you know, is there any?
Per county or whatever they have so many.
It's per county, and let's be very clear, also, Mayor and council members, the state is going to issue these licenses.
Right. I understand that, and there's certain people that have.
And that's tough for that, ain't it?
The social equity thing, the whole ballgame.
It's major. It's all changing every day.
Product gets pulled off our shelf weekly because of this or that, new product comes
in, it changes too. So we're just, it's, it's a constant, it's a constant educational battle.
And it's been a rotating door, that's why we have not brought anything forward at this, at this point. It just keeps changing.
Right. I do want to put us out there, too. We are constantly talking to attorneys and trying to understand this, so if anyone has additional questions.
Thanks.
I want to hand out these. This is just my card, it's got my personal cell phone number, my personal email on it. If you have anything to reach out and ask, I want to give you one as well.
Thank you.
Of course. So we want to, we want to play ball, we want to make sure we're doing the best for the community. We do have a family business we want to.
Well, with no other further public comments, we close the public comment part of this hearing or meeting. We're going to, unfinished and new business under four, that would be A, consideration of resolution number 2024-07, 2025 preliminary budget. So in looking over the numbers, it doesn't appear to have changed a whole lot from one year to the next. Is that correct? I mean, there's a slight increase in the, in the revenue and a slight increase in the costs of, you know, different things that we have no control over, such as fire and police?
Okay, yes, yes.
The 2025 budget.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about putting some money in the Fire Relief Association.
Well, let me ask this, Kim, let me ask you one question. Is there any money out there, I believe there is, okay, that we're required to spend or was given to us with the idea that we would spend it, that is sitting there that if we don't spend it, we're going to lose it?
Well, the public safety funds, which you've already, you know, donated some, no, there's no sunset on that.
Okay.
So those dollars are out there.
And do you have any ballpark figures to how many dollars those are?
It's 14,000, something like that.
Should be on here.
I guess what I'm talking about is, one of our issues with the fire department is we're losing personnel and trying to keep them. We're not, how would I say it?
Competitive.
Competitive with the retirement fund, and so what I'd like to do is, you know, if we can, make a motion to give, I don't know if this is the time, but just talk about it, money to the relief association.
Mayor and council members, that would be separate from your preliminary budget.
Okay, then we'll talk about this after.
But you certainly can, if you want to make that motion within the budget.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion concerning the preliminary budget?
I think the cost of the, Tim, do you think the fire protection is going to increase there? Have we got a totally given to the cities yet or no?
No, but I'm sure it's going to be around 5%.
All right.
That we know.
It should be done, but.
I don't, I just don't see it being a negative anyways.
No.
Or going down, as it's shown.
Yeah, it's showing here going down, yeah, I don't see that either.
Yeah. That's because the building went off.
Oh. That's right.
The, the fire, the building has paid for.
The note on the building is paid off. Best loan I ever signed for.
Yeah. And there's, for this report that the treasurer put together, there's an increase in expenses overall, so there is an increase there. And there is a levy increase, so. And again, that would be separate.
Yeah.
That's not coming out of your general fund.
No.
It wouldn't be part of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion concerning the resolution for the preliminary budget? With that said, can I have a motion by someone to approve the 2024-07, 2025 preliminary budget?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number 2024-07, the 2025 preliminary budget.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that good enough, Kim?
Oh, yeah.
Going to be under four, is consideration of resolution number 2024-08, 2025 preliminary levy. This would establish the 2025 general fund final levy certification at $191,735. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? It's about approximately $4,200 more than last year's.
That's, that's kind of amazing when you think about it.
So with no further discussion, we have a motion concerning resolution 2024-08?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution 2024-08, the preliminary levy for 2025 at $191,735.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going to.
Ticking through them here.
Five, council staff reports. Kim, have any staff updates?
Um, Mayor and council members, I will just note that the land use application did come in for that building, but it was incomplete, so that's why it's not before you tonight. They are revising the site plan and getting more information on the well insurer from the county that was needed, required for submitting to move forward and process that application. I am not, I do not like to talk about violations, but I will say the WMO had, through doing some inspections, there were some violations on a property, and that is, is absolutely being corrected. The WMO is going to be out on site again next Wednesday.
Okay, and that was the one we got the email on?
Yes. Yep, it's taken care of.
Good, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schroeder, do you have any thinking you want to add besides the request for money for the relief?
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking at is we're losing members and trying to keep, I'm not saying they're, you know, trying to keep them hang around is by upping their retirement. And I would like to, $10 for every person in this city, so it's, we have 343 people, so $3,340 to donate to the Relief Association. In other words, what I'm very disappointed with, and I hope other city councils listen to this, but they probably don't, is all that, the safety money that we got from the state. It's kind of embarrassing that, how much money made it back to the fire department. And so I want to, with, if with, given this money, I can go to our fire board meeting next two weeks and say, this is what we're donating, contributing to our firemen, and I'd like to see other communities step up, because $65,000, you know? So basically, our St. Croix Valley are five cities, we have 6,500 people, so if every city gives 10 bucks per person, that $65,000 would help a lot. Right now, we're a little under 5,000 per year of service for our firemen. Bayport is close to 10, and we have some members looking at hitting their mark and then cashing out and maybe going to.
Going to Bayport.
Going to Eden Prairie and working a couple of weekends and working there for seven years and getting 15,000 a year, plus their hourly pay. So we have to do some creative stuff to work on keeping these guys to stay in the valley, so.
This is not a unique problem, it's.
Everybody's having it.
Everybody's having it with, I'm going to use the hourly paid firefighter, volunteer firefighter. It's just really difficult, and there's, like Bayport, I mean, they have Anderson Window, they have so much more fire aid coming from the state that goes into that fund from Bayport than we do because of the property value up there, and.
We don't have the commercial businesses in there.
We don't have the commercial businesses either, by weekday.
So that's what I would like to see.
So anyway, it's, it's, I mean, in the 13 years I was on the board, it's, we, we did have, at one point, we were somewhat competitive, but really, we were always $1,000 less than, than like Bayport was. And it's a tough, you know, I mean, it's just, that money comes from our fire insurance to the insurance company, to the state, and then the state gives it to, actually Afton because they're the largest city, and then they pay, give, write the check to the fire department, that state aid money. Yeah. And so it's, it's, I mean, I'm, I was on that, what Tim's doing now on a relief association, it's, it's a difficult, there's a whole lot of figuring out that goes into that that is rough to track, but because of their, of these other places now, like Maplewood, they don't have volunteers anymore. They're all full-time. I mean, that's the direction this is going. I, I have no idea where it's going to go down here because it's, that's, they want, they're talking about full-time firefighters.
Because right now, our budget for our fire department's like 650,000 with our fire department and ambulance service, with the equipment, the building, maintaining the building. Granted, the building just came off, but we should have kept some of that money to help with other stuff.
Now, we're going to need windows and, you know.
And, uh, it just, it's an ongoing thing, and we just need to, you know, we can have a fire department and all the equipment if we don't have the guys there. We need guys there.
Nobody pulls the boots on it. They don't put fires out very well.
So my question to you, Tim, is, is, you know, basically you want us to approve something like this so that you can go talk to the other city councils to twist their arms or?
Well, I'm going to go to, I'll say it at our fire department at our board meeting, but then I'm probably going to go, and I told our chair that I'd be willing to go to the other city councils and talk about how disappointed I am in the, in the commitment we're making to our fire department.
So is it possible for you to do that without us actually appropriating the money at this particular time?
Mr. Mayor and council members, what I would suggest is, is do that, but because we're on.
Right.
Council updates, no action should be taken at this point.
Okay, but we can put it forward.
It's certainly be on the next agenda, but what I need to get is the, the next meeting, we don't know when that will be, but get the actual figure.
Yep.
I, I just do want to be clear for the notes, what were you suggesting?
$10 per every citizen in town.
3,400, 3,400 bucks, basically.
334 people we have.
Yeah.
So 3,400?
Yeah, about 3,400, yeah.
3340.
Okay, and I, I believe, huh?
To be correct, 3340.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
$3,340.
Forty bucks, yeah.
Okay.
That's at the last census.
Yeah, I will have that at our, whatever meeting it is, I will have the actual figure. You have that still in public safety?
Yeah.
So you certainly could, the public safety funds are just for public safety, they were very strict about that.
Oh, yeah, well.
You may want to donate more.
Right. Well, here's my thing is, out of the five. Right. Well, here's my thing is, out of the five cities, we almost got $280,000. And so far.
You mean was given to the five cities?
Five cities, yeah. And maybe, I think Afton gave 20, we gave five. You know, I'm like, why do we give more and you guys to help, you know? I think Lakeland gave 10, St. Croix Beach was 15, and I don't know what St. Mary's Point was. But it was, the total was under 50 grand, and out of the five cities, we got 280, so it's kind of sad. You know, when we need resources over there, you know? So that's my sticking point.
Yep. You have anything else, Tim?
No, that's it.
Council member Wilson?
I don't know if I talked about this or not, so I'm going to throw it out here. The kitchen compostable waste starts next month in the garbage for, and I believe, the debt I have at home was preliminary, so I don't have the actual stuff, and I think there was something in the county update, the, yeah. But it basically is a, you can go to the environmental center, get a bag, and it goes in your garbage. That's all you have to do. Bag it up and they, they take it out at Pig's Eye or wherever they go with it. And it's just a voluntary program for kitchen compostable waste. And, or as my wife says, coffee grounds. You know, yeah, and it starts in October in our city. And that's, that's my entire update right there, is compostable waste. Think about it.
Yeah, the only thing that I, I mean, I read something about it, okay, and the only thing I, I wasn't, I'm not questioning whether you're accurate or not, but maybe I am. Dealing with what you do with it, I mean, I knew you were supposed to go to the Washington County probably hazardous waste place or wherever it is to pick up the bags, but.
Doesn't make sense to drive down there and get them.
Yeah, as far as, you know, depositing it in your regular garbage as compared to having to take it back to the.
No, no, you don't take it back there. You put it in your regular garbage, and when they offload the, they tip the truck. They will be separating those bags out.
But I did notice they do have a site somewhere there, you can, if you happen to be going there.
Right, I mean, and, and the one up north is, yeah. You had something, Dennis?
Uh, yes. The county will be sending out supposedly to each address a postcard explaining this in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
And where it's been rolled out in other parts of the county, you don't have to go get the bags, you can order them, and they'll deliver them to your door in a box of 50 or whatever.
You can buy them on Amazon too. And they compost up really well because they're in my garbage, so.
Okay, Tim Hutton?
Yeah, I guess just a real quick brief on what Tim was saying is, I think he, we're concerned about the volunteer fire department or paid volunteer fire department, but it's the retention, people don't want to be firefighters anymore. Time is important, so trying to retain the ones you have is pretty important, so. Yeah, that's all he's, he's just, you know, we're looking for ways to retain the current firefighters we have. Otherwise, we train them, that costs us money, and then they leave for some other place where they can make much more money.
It used to be just training was five grand for a firefighter.
Yeah, it used to be.
Yeah, that's, that's it. Then you, you throw in turnout gear and, you know, you're up to five digits real quick.
Eight grand for turnout gear.
Yeah.
And that, and that is a life expectancy on that, if you use it or not.
Anything else, Tim?
No, that was it. Go on. Yep, thanks.
Nothing from the mayor as far as I'm concerned. I, there were a couple of storms that came through, Second Street North, there was a tree blocking half the road. I cut that up, the, the part that was in the road. And since then, some tree company has taken the rest of the tree, as well as another one on it, in that property away. I did cut some brush along Fourth Street, just be on that hill or just going up, going east on Fourth Street. And I think I did an adequate job, but I, you know, if anybody wants to look at it, they can tell me that I need to go back and clean it up a little bit more. Beyond that, there's a couple of places that I, this has more to do with my road work than the mayor's job, but it, basically, there's some places that I usually get to in the fall, which would be at the end of Year Street there, Tim. And as well as over there, off of Quinell, let's see, between Third Street and whatever that is right there by, I could name the people that live there, I can't name the street. So I usually hit those both because they tend to encroach upon the road. I could ask the homeowner to do it, but I find it faster to do it myself, and if it's a beautiful fall day, I don't mind being out there. Other than that, I haven't got anything additional to add. So I guess at this time, we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Let's see, council meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.